Like strictly reporting back from.
I mean, as long as it's just a brief report and not something that would be discussed. Then yeah, I mean, I think it could be like an announcement or something like that.
Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts to share. People are complaining about the brightness of the lights is what I want to talk about.
It's really.
Yes, the lights. I feel like it's usually the other way, like the streets are too dark. That's what I hear.
Have they changed recently?
Changed sometime in like the last five years, people put the new ones up on the poles that are like their their color temperature is cooler and they're small.
Hopefully it's tame. Is definitely an issue that I hear people talking about. And you know, we'll definitely have new lighting standards in our LCP update. For just design though, but I think we'll have some other light standards, but I don't know that that. You know, there are certain things like protecting. Sensitive habitats that would be a coastal issue, but just like not shining lights on your neighbor or you know, things like that, that wouldn't be a coastal issue necessarily. So maybe the city council could.
Yeah, fair enough. I mean, that came up because there's essentially two different types of street lights. Just the ones along the street which are like barely dim and warm. Blast people's windows. They're also leaving people thinking just so that's that cool light zero. Kind of character of some of the lights guy.
It was it, but it's in town.
Three of them on underway out there. I think there's one on Hector.
And PG need it? I assumed when they. The city of Arcata that it was the city of Arcata that did it. Yeah, because when, yes, I think that that's usually city. I don't know.
Recording in progress.
Uh, Commissioner. Commissioner Cole. Commissioner Hakinen. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Hopkins.
The next item on the agenda is group report on Tuesday dinner and change. Move to group agenda. Second. And now we want to add from four, the end of the call credit for online, let's see some of the dots. All right, moving on to our agenda items.
Um, so yeah, so I think. You know, the, the conditions requiring a monthly report don't apply anymore, but I know there's definitely some interest and you guys will continue to be involved in trails. So I thought it would be nice to continue to provide updates and there are some things going on. So for the Van Wick Trail. Staff appealed that denial as, as expected. From the planning commission for another temporary extension of the temporary closure. That extension was not a CDP in itself because it was a. It was a condition on the CDP issued earlier in the year, I think March, that allowed an extension. And so it was not appealable to the coastal commission, although. Someone did attempt to appeal it. And I have had some conversations with coastal commission staff about the conditions and. You know, serial extensions and things like that. Because it was anyway, there's been some confusion over that. The city council did vote to extend the closure just for two months though, so it's going to expire on December 22nd. And part of that is because I think we have a, a solution for being able to. Allow the, the closure to expire and allow the trail to reopen without doing anything that requires a coastal development permit. Because I, I expect that anything that requires a coastal development permit, whether it's a repair or a permanent closure is going to be appealed to. To the coastal commission. And so, and certainly the city doesn't want to be in this kind of. You know, loop of. You know, temporary closures and appeals to the coastal commission that, that we've kind of gotten into. So. So that's really positive. It's too bad. We didn't know that five years ago, but so pretty simple repairs in terms of either just cutting off the posts and railings of the existing retaining wall. Or putting a couple of the railings back up that have fallen off and they're just sitting on, on the ground. The, the city council also prior to allowing that closure to expire. You know, expressed interest in meeting with the Uro tribe and the ancestral society who have both requested that that trail be closed. And you know, the, the city council is still going to have to. Think about the long-term situation of that trail in terms of whether they want to. Permanently close it at some point, pursue repairs, just wait for it to fail. Anyway, so that'll, it'll be an ongoing issue, but for now hopefully that's a solution. City council did meet with the Uro tribe. Unfortunately, they didn't get to get into many details due to some. Miscommunication and some time limitations, but so that's where we stand. At this point, so we expect the, like I said, the closure to expire. On the 22nd, in the meantime, public work staff will, will repair a couple of the railings. So that there aren't nails sticking out anymore because the posts are still good. And then put up, take out the, the barrier and replace the sign that says trail closed with a caution unstable ground signage. And so hopefully that will. Be that for a while for Axel Ingram Memorial Trail. City staff cleared the trail down to the new realignment. And, and then city staff met with representatives of the Trinidad Rancheria who had requested consultation on that project under policy 69. As part of that site visit, the Rancheria did give their approval for that to move, move forward. And the city council did approve a contract with RCA, so that just needs to be finalized and signed and then find a weather window. To do the vegetation removal and then we can start working on, on some designs for temporary improvements to get it reopened next summer.
Yeah, sorry, I was a few minutes later, but everything I heard that Trevor said pretty much covered what I was. You're saying.
So I guess, well, wait, I just want to question any timelines for the city staff to be down. Adjustment was supposed to be getting situated to reopen.
Well, what I'm thinking of is after our council meeting on the 10th. So some, sometime between then and whatever time it takes to get it done, which shouldn't be long. So I would anticipate by the end of the year.
Well, December. December 20th would be a better.
Yeah, yeah, I got with you. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Have a quick question. I know that you said that you were just standing to report as per as the. Is it still being reported out at the city council's success and tracks?
I think it's part of the staff reports. There's a blurb about what's going on with, with the trails. But the city council didn't include that specifically as a condition.
Yeah, I plan to continue including that, those updates because the council and the community are concerned about, you know. The trails and the condition of the trails and having trails open.
Is there going to be another attempt to? Sort of re- with the Uro tribe? Be a kind of stuff and flop.
Well. The main thing we were going to try to address within. Either rerouting the trail or making improvements where the trail currently is. Meaning where people actually walk. So by removing the trail close sign and putting that basically beware unstable ground ahead. And then just replacing the boards on the posts that. Were the former retaining wall. Which is standing there. So we're, we're not doing any kind of improvements in the ground. Moving anything in the ground, changing anything from the ground. So therefore I don't foresee a, a need for another meeting now. You know, if, if that, if we have like something that we can address in the future. That could change things, meaning possibly the upslope. From the condition of the current trail, we talked with our city engineer about possibly doing like a. Pipe bridge, but he felt that the ground was too unstable for anything like that. And I know just walking on the west side of. The slump portion, when you're starting to go back up towards the west part of Van Wick. It just starts giving way, or if you're coming down from the west side of where it's slow. And the ground starts giving way, so you have to be real careful. And, and I think some of that other ground would be similar, at least in our. City engineers assessment. It, it, you know, in other words, we wouldn't be able to get the copper space all the way across there. That part of it would start giving way and it would sort of.
Right, yeah, I get that. I guess the, the Uro tribe. That's expressed interest in closing the trail. So I figured we might want to continue to try to talk about that.
Well, the, the, the insurance. You know, they. Are the ones who suggested the sign the way it would be because they're the ones originally said to have the trail closed. And we were able to get them where they said, okay. You can remove trail clothes. So technically the trail would be open and our city engineer, it doesn't seem like we can make proper improvements. Unless we can get the upslope property owners to agree. So as far as I'm concerned, technically the trail would be open. And, and as a result, it, it would be just not even called the trail anymore. So it's not really, the trail is open. It's just that. People can pass through there and if they want to. And, and the way the insurance company had phrased it was that it's as if you would be walking in other areas. Where there isn't, for instance, a designated trail. Therefore, there would be trail immunity because people would be walking in an area where. Nothing has been improved. But in our case, because there was an improvement and it's failed improvement, they don't like to see it all the trail. But as long as there's nothing. Where the dirt is when people walk, that's considered a city improvement, like steps.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know, I get all that. I guess I'm just thinking, trying to think further ahead in terms of like. The long-term point of this trail. There, like, I guess, like I said, there's been interest in a long-term closure, permanent closure of that trail. And you know, I understand all.
Right.
The rigmarole, it's short-term reopening, if you want to call it that. But. I just wanted, I just want to stress that maybe we should continue or maybe not continue, but actually try to have some good meetings with. The Uro tribe in addition to the TAS. So that would be going forward and then. If somebody brings forward proposal to currently close that trail, like. All of us in the city council and the city have a better understanding.
Well, we had a meeting with the coastal commission local staff on Monday and I, you know, basically the. Issue came up of trail open, trail closed. And I just indicated that if we. Follow what the insurance company is suggesting, we don't even have to. Go in that path and you know, in that, a trail, you know, is there a trail? Is there not a trail? It's. To them, it seems logical that it wouldn't be identified as trail because then we might have some trail, you know, loss of trail.
I'd, I'd like to provide a little bit of clarification. It, it is officially a trail and the city's LCP. So that will have to be addressed as part of the LCP update officially on some level. So I, I agree with Tristan that the city is going to need to continue to reach out because they, they don't want people walking down there. So. The, the Uro tribe. So it is, it will be an ongoing issue and we will have to address that.
Unofficially abandoning the trail. And alternate patients for the city to do so. I anticipate what should I have from the public on that? That, I guess my question, did the insurance. Foundation actually tells them we cannot advertise it or we just kind of thinking that's about.
They, they said that if the words trail were removed, that they would be okay with it and no improvements that are made that could possibly be. And we talked about cutting the boards down to the bottom.
That again, some questions specifically is just that they say we have to put a trail.
Well, if we say, yeah.
Just kind of creating the policy abandonment. Longer term concerns personally over, you know, not abandoning trail. Windows three trail is very low on that here. Kind of, so I just worry about this. You know, four words of words, slippery slope, kind of making it find itself now.
Well, when he was present, we talked about it. It, it was basically to replace the one sign with the other sign. And he said not to have the word trail. So, but as far as I'm concerned, I mean, you know, the locals use it, whoever uses it. You know, they, they can use it. It's not that. You know, we're going to have anything blocking the path of people going across there. The, the condition of that trail since I began almost six years ago. Has continued to deteriorate to the point that it's mother nature and sooner or later, there might not be. A way to cross safely across there. But, but yeah, I mean, that's, that's, to me, it's, I prefer that the city doesn't close it. And let people use it if they want to use it. But again. Caution them that it's at their own risk because of the fact that, you know, it's, it's up to nature and how that erosion. Goes over time. Otherwise, the only real solution would be if we could. Somehow get the upslope property owners and the Churri and the Uro tribe to agree of going down. Going up, going up and avoiding the slope area, which we measured it and it's 55 feet. From end to end and it's dropped seven feet from where it would have been originally.
Well, I just wanted to, I just want to point out Eli, they use. The phrase the only real solution just now. I think the best sort of what several commissioners are seeking is a real solution. That's, it's not capitalizing on some. Gray area that we're calling. Looks pretty clearly a trail, not a trail. And there's, there's problems there. Yes, let's pursue the only real solution. Since that goes.
Well, we, we pursue considerably the upslope. And the upslope owners will not agree to it unless somehow the Churri and Uro agree to it. And, and we just got to a dead end to the point that, you know, we wanted to have. Where people can utilize it, but on the other hand. We weren't able with the insurance to do something that could start giving way and then would create liability. Especially something like redwood steps that were placed on there without disturbing the ground, started slipping. Sliding and then people can then, you know, say your, your steps that you put in there failed. Then that could be the cause of soon. So this seemed to be the best way to just have it. Where it would be accessible and we still have coverage through the insurance. And we'd have to trail renew.
Trevor. First on the axle, excuse me, on the Van Wick Trail. I think it's important what Commissioner Cole kind of alluded to is the. Impetus to closing the trail. It only seems to be coming from two, from three sources. Uro tribe, the ancestral society and the upslope property owner. I don't think you're going to find much evidence. Over the last five years of public comment, citizens of Trinidad and trailer users are interested in closing the Van Wick Trail. I think you're going to see a lot of evidence, people like myself, that have constantly supported, supported, trying to maintain and keep that trail alive. So I think it's important to me at least. A lot of trail sports just been worn down by this. I'm the only one here tonight. And I'm just here, it's just on the agenda. I saw it today and I thought, I'm going to go see what's going on. I would suggest that you. Make a push to have the council, have staff report to the council on both the Van Wick Trail, the Axolique Memorial Trail. On a monthly basis. Keep the pressure up. I think the idea, if we go back five years, when five, I don't even know, it's been five years now since the trail was closed. The big push at that time was in Caltrans. Talking about a soldier pile of wall down there, great, big, giant, massive improvement. I worked for Caltrans. I know what. I worked in planning. I know what that stuff's all about. And that was too big. There were a lot of other options at that time that could have been done. Much more minimal trail maintenance, city repairs. You see cities. Counties, Caltrans all the time. Slumpages like that. They're using wire gaveon boxes, wire gaveon mass. It's not a big deal. They're not permanent. And listen to what Eli said, well, if we do any improvements down there right now, that might fail. Well, what do Caltrans do and what do cities and counties do all the time? They make improvements. They maintain roads that are slipping away. Well, they might fail. So do we not do something because it might fail? Or do we do something? To get trails in better condition. If I was an upslope property owner. And the city came in with an idea of doing. Some not real expensive trail repair with gaveons. Engineered block wall. Like what the Rancheria has done down at the heart. I mean, look at what's going on down there. And here's Uro tribe and the Churri and ancestral society saying, no, we got to close this trail. There's cultural resources there. Pretty massive improvements went on down there at the dock just recently. I'm sure they had cultural monitors there. But keep the pressure on the city. That's a public resource. It's a city right of way. You can look back at the ancient pictures of Caltrans. Van Wick Street running up there. It was a major right of way coming up that hill. Museum Society has a picture that was in their semi-annual report right on, right in there. Shows that back like the 1920s. Major thoroughfare going up, but that's public one. So keep the pressure on. Axel Ingram. I'm sorry I'm taking up so much time, but I guess I'm taking it up for all the public that's not here tonight. The Axel Ingram Memorial Trail is, I think that's great. That we're finally getting something done in terms of maintenance on that trail. I was at the council meeting last month sometime when the ancestral society, Sarah presented her presentation on their vision. For the actual. Vision to fix the Axel Ingram Memorial Trail, the way they would like to get fixed. Boy, it was a bright shiny object. I loved it. It's beautiful. But. Where's the money? I sent an email to Angela, the city's grant writer, just saying, asking her, what's the possibility that this looks like? This looks like it's a. It's a great project, but really realistic. Where's the money going to come from? And. What I said to her was. After reading the GHB memorandum, it looks like the planning and design phase alone is over $400,000 and the preferred construction cost is pushing 1.5 million. For a total approaching $2 million in 2024. Several different grant sources were mentioned at the council meeting, but that looks like a big number. It is. It's a real big number. Angela got back to me. And said, currently there may be funding from the coastal conservancy, however, it's a small amount in comparison to what we need. Additionally, we would likely need multiple funding sources to accomplish a project of this magnitude. As funding for projects as such seems to be somewhat limited at the moment and competitive. So what the city's doing now with trail maintenance, keep pushing for that. Because. Yeah, it would be lovely. To have a $2 million project to fix the Axel Ingram Memorial Trail, the way the ancestral society wants to do. But. I don't think it's happening at the time. Thank you guys for listening. Keep up the pressure.
Yeah, after we pitched out to Angela, she was able to find the ocean protection council grant that she's working on. And it was in the last council packet. And if they get enough information, it will be again in this coming council packet or for sure by January. But it potentially could be up to $10 million that would be available. And, and we would be requesting for that along with possibly Edward Street at the top there where the. Form, right by the former lighthouse site where it's failing, that we would try to get some kind of a plan in place for. Edward Street to, to be possibly moved somewhat or if it needed to be one lane or whatever. But somehow they'll be able to address that as well is, is what we're going to be seeing. So basically two projects.
And.
And uh.
The Van Wijk Trail and the two.
No, I'm just saying that, that it's possible to get up to ten million. You know, we, we might not get anything or we might get enough for one of the projects. It's hard to say. So just depends on what they come up with. Uh, but yeah, I mean, so far unfortunately there hasn't been some kind of viable option other than. Possibly going up slope if we could have gotten agreement, but. We uh, we tried considerably for several years, uh, trying to follow. Uh, where it was mentioned at one point possibly doing like would be a goat trail up there. So we took the Sure I and the UROC representatives there and Trevor was with me. And we talked to them about, okay, if we can't do an improvement where the current trail is, can we go up slope then? Unfortunately, they didn't go for it then. Still, I'm not saying that, but what I'm getting at is uh, you know, ideally we'd find a solution. And as we haven't been able to find some issue because the property owners won't agree unless if the uh. The, the uh, Sure I and the UROC agree. Uh, and they made it clear to us. So it's almost like a catch twenty two. You know, we, we can't get an agreement on one side. We can't get an agreement on the other side. We won't be able to get the land. And to do improvements from the property owners unless they. Get some kind of consensus from the uh, especially the Sure I. So that's what we've been told. And then I was even in uh, uh, you know, some conversations with the property owners. Trying to see if we could get anything going. And for a while, everyone thought we had it. Uh, but then after our meeting where Trevor and I were there, uh, and unfortunately. Uh, didn't progress.
Payway is not about this process. So far it was two trails and one is to. Uh, I, I, I'm disappointed that I can push it how it's taught to the insurance consortium sooner. To see if that is very well fixed, just simply get access back again. Like that, and even years waiting for that. So it's really disappointing. That's a big takeaway for me. Going forward and then.
I think it's a different rep might be part of the reason why, but.
Seems like. Uh, to, to restore access, right? Uh, it's just, at the end of the day, access is the biggest thing to take my way, right? And then the other thing is uh, recognizing that. The Sure I study area, obviously there are multiple people that need to be, groups that need to be consulted. I have that in my mind too. They're completely stated they want to be consulted. Uh, so I would hope going forward, city staff, we. Extraordinarily proactive with all the different groups and ticketatories to the uh, to the. Make sure that we're reaching out more than just maybe stand and voting. To make sure that we don't have any delays because you know, now it's whether or not we can get RCA now therefore. Brush the tape creating, but we perhaps should that could actually be sooner. And then I recognize that there is around that, but the reality is they are part of the. Plan and they think we can have offices, so we're making sure that we're. Very, very proactive, I think, along very.
Trevor, yeah, quick question. Trevor, when might, when might we see the uh, next rail related action item come before us?
Rob, hopefully um, repairs on Axel Lingren. Before. You know, uh, late winter, early spring, those, we would need to have approvals. To get, get things open by Memorial Day, so.
And was, excuse me, did that come back to us or anything?
Yes, yes.
As part of the. Transfer. Is the, is the Van Wijk Trail included or is it addressed in any way that uh, transfer process?
It's not within the Sure I study area. Oh, you're leaving. So uh, yeah, safety element. Um, back to the general plan update. Um. Yeah, I provided a little bit of background. It's been a while since we've worked on a general plan update. I think the, the introduction element is a good place to. Um, kinda get a refresher. Um, in terms of the safety element, it's not one we've looked at since twenty twelve. So I don't know, Richard, were you? So you're probably the only one um. Uh, that, that saw the old one. Um, this is really totally brand new. I did not use a whole lot out of the. The old one. It was pretty sparse. Um, a lot of state laws have changed. Um, coastal commission requirements have changed, made the safety element much more complex and. And added a lot of requirements, um, regulatory requirements, the safety element. Um, as, as we're learning more about hazards and. And seeing more and more hazards, particularly with climate change. So um, and one of the unfortunate. Um, things is that. There are very few newly certified um, safety elements by the coastal commission. Um, because uh, local jurisdictions and the coastal commission have not been able to come to agreement. Um, so a lot of what's in here, a lot of the text um, comes from the new community coastal resiliency. Plan and then a lot of the policies come from Half Moon Bay's recent safety element. So. You know, a lot of, you know, it's, it's, it's very much still a draft. So I'm at this point looking for fairly high level. Um, comments, questions. Um, you know, just, you know, overall direction, concerns. Um, you know, a lot of these policies, I didn't spend a lot of time editing them to make them, you know. Specific to Trinidad because just want to make sure even that conceptually we want them in there. Um. Uh, you know, what kinds of information do you want in there? Level of detail, um, figures. Um, looking for some input on. And then um, the other piece, so there's sort of the. Coastal natural resources, um, protections and, and issues. And then there's also the, the preparedness and response um, part of it as well, um, which I have not dug into much yet. Um, part of that is because um, you know, the, the city's emergency operations plan is, is pretty out of date. Um, and I know, I know there has been some talk at the city of, of getting, updating that. Um, and then the local hazard mitigation plan also needs to be incorporated and that has a lot of the. Uh, response and preparedness, um, kinds of policies in it. Um, but that is um, gonna expire, I think in March uh, next year. And so. Um, the city was a participant in the county's um, plan and so the county is starting to update theirs. And so that's gonna be an, an ongoing process, but um, you know, I think that we're gonna need to do some. Some outreach with um, you know, emergency responders. Um, you know, I'm, I'm interested in learning more about what the CERT team is doing, um, that sort of thing. So. Um, there might be some things that you guys could help me with. Um, and I think that that's. Um, we can take a little bit longer with that part of it, um, because that's really not gonna be part of the LCP. Um, so isn't gonna be um. Things that are certified, that have to go for certification by the coastal commission. Um. So that's why I sort of focused on, on the more of the natural um, hazards. For now.
Will that be specific enough?
Yes, but we have to incorporate it into the safety element. That might just be by reference. Um, and we'll probably just reference the most current version. And that um, that opens this. It's important because that gives the city access to a lot more funding, like FEMA disaster. Um, funding and that sort of thing to have these in place. Um, but yeah, I can send you a link to the county's document. It's. It's pretty extensive. And so what they did is they have an overall, like the, the main part of the document is overall county wide. And then each community has its own. Annex. They call it basically a chapter or appendix in the end that is more specific. Um, to the city. A lot of it's kinda. Heavy stuff and it's, you know, kind of form checklist kind of stuff. Um, but um. So it might be helpful just to bring some of that in, in a more easier to understand narrative form into this document as well. Oh, yes.
Good question. I had. Will you kind of draft this new one? Did you have some on your mind the concept of future growth for the city, potential annexation? Figure this type of stuff, because that was going through, I was recognizing, I was thinking, oh, that doesn't apply to us. Well, if we begin to tend to go back to point or, you know, they just. It could very well be something we need to think about now. And as to how to do it off, you know, the next.
Uh, yeah, that's a good question. I mean, I don't, I think. I don't think we want to get too bogged down in that potential because we don't know what that's gonna look like. Um. You know, some of those areas are gonna be outside the coastal zone, so they might be, might be things that are easier to update. Um, in the future if we need to um, do some annexation. I mean, I. I mean, I have been trying to get a, a staff meeting together to talk about um, annexation of the Mill Creek area. Which is where those water requests are and that's outside of the coastal zone. Um. But yeah, no, I think that's a really good point. Um, certainly at least lay some groundwork that would make. That easier in the future. You know, I think one thing that. Especially after putting all this time into the general plan is I really hope that the city. You know, doesn't just, once we get this finally done, go and put it aside for another ten, fifteen years. Um, but I think it's gonna be important to. You know, at least every five years, kind of take a look at it and, and update it or, or re. You know, say, yes, this is what we want. Um, just so it's not this kind of effort again.
All right, so thoughts on how you want to see if you can sever the request title. I know it's very hard to make a page, but I think, I mean, I need to go. Uh, I mean, maybe that's a good. A good way to do it. I don't know if we want to start more for our questions. Yeah, for sure. And this is a silly question, but do we need to have like a. Section to save. I guess when I thought saving on like one of the. I don't even know what would go into that, but I would like to.
Yes, I would say yes, that would be in the D, that section that I haven't spent a lot of time on. Um, you know, and I think. The. There's, you know, there's, there's, there's a group that's trying to um. You know, look at that county fire service here. I forget what they called CSA four. Um. And the city should participate in that. I'm not sure they have been recently. Um, you know, cause I, I. I always thought there was a mutual aid agreement with Cal Fire and I, but there isn't. Um, so it's just more of a courtesy. Um, so yeah, so I think, you know, and that's part of why I didn't work on. That section much because I think a lot of that stuff is a little bit in flux. I think even, I mean, there's even a possibility of changing the. The, the police. The police situation too. Um, I, I don't know if you, I, I think they. Yeah, there was a, a presentation at the last council meeting, um, Blue Lake. Um, and the insurance, Sierra, Sierra. They have approached um, the city of Ferndale to. Contract with them for police services or even form a JPA, a joint powers authority. Because the, the sheriff's department might be shifting liability um, onto the city. Um, but anyway, so the city council elected not to pursue that at this time, but kind of watch what's going on. But the, the rancher also has expressed some interest in that. So I think that makes it. Would make it more palatable for the city. So anyway, so I think a lot of these things are in flux, which is sort of, I didn't want to spend too much. Time on at this point, but yes, there would be a, a section on police and, and fire, yes.
Well, I guess it's not a problem. If you might, you said, well, um, I, I, I don't want to go through it page by page. I think we're not there yet. Um, but I think it would be useful, based on my perspective, to understand how it's laid out and why it's laid out. Uh, for me was. I, I defended both the power and which. And much too detailed for what I would expect in a. Um, of an element. And I got completely lost in terms of what the policies were. And what the new uh, goals were and. All those were reminding me to sway the views of the, all a lot, but. Sound to me, that maybe that's necessary. I'm not trying to. Criticize, I think, but that is just, it's just my first perspective. I just felt like. That's a emphasis on natural safety, as we just pointed out. Very little. The other issue that I think is possible, not more. And um. It, it felt to me like uh, a lot of that natural safety information was repeated. Many, many times throughout the element. And I, I, the first thing that beat my mind is, why isn't this in one spot for the whole element? And then if you need to refer to it, you refer to it rather than repeating a lot of the. I could be wrong, but to me it just felt like it was a lot of redundant information that. Uh, could have been put in like. The first portion of it or introductory view or even the poll. And then necessarily you can refer back to. High marketing and kind of raise up the, the goals and policies which we were getting lost. You know, we had this discussion before too, is when you try to outline the whole element. And put it together with, you know, start with the top paragraphs and then look really through the individual. I got lost. And I kept going back and back and forth and we get. So. I, I, I don't feel that we're ready for that. Page by page. Now there may be certain comments, everybody has a page and certain I do, but I don't know. Maybe we want to take one pages out and, you know, something like that, but.
Well, and I'm, you know, I think, you know, one option, I, I agree. Um, yeah, and part of that is because. I was copying and pasting out of the community resilience plan and it was easy to do that and not have to edit it. Um, but I, I agree. I, I think it is overly long and overly detailed and I'm gonna need to, to spend some time paring it down. Um. Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm, I would be very interested in comments on the organization. Um, Tristan sent me some, some. Um, Tristan sent me some, some comments already in the document. I would be happy to take. Um, you know, whether it's scanned and, and sent or, or comment in the, in the word document or, or whatever works for you. Um, you know, that, that might be one way to kind of start to compile all the various comments, um, especially where I see some, some convergence of, of comments and where there's some, some conflicts, I can bring it back to, to you guys um, in the future. So, um, yeah.
But maybe, yeah, let's just start with the, with the format. So this template is not mandated in any way.
No, and I, I really, you know, I kind of struggled with the organization. Um, you know, looking at, at, at various other documents. Um, but again, there's not a lot of really new ones I could look at. I, I should probably spend a little bit more time looking at ones outside the coastal zone. Um, because they're still going to address the same topics probably. Um, it's, um, it's just the policies will be, be different in the coastal zone. Um, and I have a feeling that the coastal commission is going to require a, a lot of, you know, a lot of these policies I think are hardly applicable to Trinidad, but I, I think we're going to be stuck with them to some, some degree, but. Yeah.
I found that it's sort of softer. I thought this kind of, you know, it's already.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to just say comply with something that's already in existence. So, um, we could refer to those things and say that that's why we don't need other policies. But yeah.
Your intention of previous. All right.
It's not because it's not, it's only the more current ones. Well, unless you want to look at the nineteen seventy five or seventy four version. It's, uh, I mean, it was more like fifteen pages. I think it was, it was um, probably on the too brief side. Um, organization. Yeah, I forget.
What was here? I think there's a lot of things that, as a city and you probably need to think about, you know, addressing now, you know. We didn't treat by the, you know, the relocation of people concept and I saw your stat was kind of we, the city is going to have to deal eventually, right? Uh, critical submissions. Uh, learning about that. I had the same on Tristan did, or if the law was a piece and I had a whole bunch of thoughts on. Fireside and it, um, and there's a lot of things in flux, but I would say maybe we want to put together some placeholders right now and get out.
Yeah.
Um, some very broad statements that, you know, it's just, uh, fighter, you know, the multiple firearm. There's two or three of us that are raised with a core ramp, right? So obviously that obviously seem to be sustainable and provide citizens the coverage and protection they should have. I think so. So we're getting there. We talked about the water storage, you know, that fire. See that was a standard, which is fire. Well, you know, so maybe there's things that I had to make a priori. Like that, but um.
If you, I mean, are you willing to take a stab at maybe creating a little bit of an outline and some starting to put together some information because that's, you know, I'm not really involved in that side of things. So I don't really know. I can't just write that myself because I don't, I don't know. Um. There, I think there were some things about fire flows in some of the GHD's reports on the water system. So I can pull, pull that from there.
Personally, I think that's kind of a little bit, so that's a a big, bad scary thing for the town that we need more storage, we need more storage, we need more stuff. Because this reality is a huge waterfall that's so much that reference here, that's not a direct water operation. It's not anything like, right? Build a line for that. It's a different tactic strategy for those who build a fire for that, that are coming down more than, you know, for stable.
Yeah.
But yeah, I can actually take a stab at that, at that, at least in the summer.
Yeah.
Okay, my question, the, the first thing I hear references a lot of the reports, things the city should do and all this stuff. And, uh, you know, should study, it should look stability, should update reports, show these things and that's all great. And I'm happy to put those things in this general plan document. But if there's no teeth behind it, we're not going to, you know, if the city's not going to get those studies done or what's, what's the point? I guess the city should update its work to operation and disagree with that. And I've not been here that state for about three years now and hasn't happened yet. So, you know, the, I don't know how many. Can you put teeth into this? Not really, right?
I mean, and what's a little bit weird, um, is the standard of review for LCP policies. So the certified policies is somewhat different than the standard of review and the purpose and intent of general plan policies. Um, you have a little bit more flexibility um, in, in the policies that aren't part of the certified LCP. But I mean, the city is, is supposed to be consistent with those policies. So just having a policy that says you should do that is supposed to have it some teeth just on its own. Um, but it, it is, it is a little bit more voluntary. Um. I mean, you could, you know, we, we played with some of that language before, you know, within three years, but it's, it is difficult for the, the planning commission to kind of dictate things for the, the city council. Um, and we do have, you know, this doesn't, this doesn't have the sort of hierarchy that some of our other policies have had in terms of, um, you know, there weren't, there weren't clear goals um, in the document that I, I took this out of. Um, and there, it didn't have um, the implementation programs. So we have, we have programs and so the idea of the programs are there a little bit more implementation oriented. And so we could add some, some programs to say, you know, within three years, the planning commission will review this or whatever. Um, so you can, you can add those kind of things. Does it give it teeth? Hmm, but it gives you, it gives you an argument to give to the city council or city manager, whoever's pushing those things along.
Yeah, one thing is that we talked about before, we need to add. If we were to add, you know, all of the different plans and programs that we say that we are supposed to do, and the roles that we are supposed to review, various documents. I can imagine that we have a plan to part of large and do that, much less city staff. And I, and I'm not, I don't mean it as a, it's not intended to be a criticism, but I mean, if you showed this to the city council, you know, everything is supposed to be done on the regular basis in which it's required. You know, it's just, it's, it's almost insurmountable in one avenue for this small, you know? So I really worry about adding to it. But it's all through here, you know, it's doing this in three years or eight years or. Well, I'm thinking about it too. I, I, I struggled a little bit too with who we were writing this for. And I know that, you know, as a government, I mean, I have a government, it's, it's a document that's intended to, you know, provide guidance for the city in terms of landings. But I got a little concerned because some of the uh, technical information, particularly some of the information regarding um, uh, sea uh, level rise was difficult to understand. Not that I don't like a lot of data, but who are we trying to, what's the message that we're trying to send? And who is, who is, who is to receive the message of this? And I'm not convinced that some of this information is really pertinent to um, to what the intent of the element is supposed to be. It's a personal, personal feeling, but it was very difficult to follow some of the uh, some of the technical information.
And I don't, no, I agree with that. I'd say a lot, especially regarding the sea level and that stuff. You know, really, pretty any stuff, it's who, yeah, who are we trying to inform about that? And what, I don't even know. I mean, the specifics of it, you know, would apply to specific projects, but it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't really maybe not fully flushed out and.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that's a good point. Um, we do want this to be usable and understandable by, by the public. Um, and you know, we could refer more to the technical reports that are background information um, and have less of the information in this actual text, I think.
This is a, I'm sure we have a, but this doesn't involve, what's going on down there? Down with beer and it doesn't really involve external, the sand that might be transferred. It's sometimes, so, I mean, they prove them all.
It, yes, yes. Uh, you know, those policies, you know, and again, I, I, I do need to, um, consult with coastal commission staff on a lot of this stuff. Um, they've canceled our last two monthly meetings on the LCP update and I have a backlog of things. Um, I want to talk to them about, um, you know, I'm not sure whether that's something that the coastal commission pushed for, for Half Moon Bay, or whether that was something Half Moon Bay wanted to do, whether it was some sort of compromise. I am, because my, I think it was, might have been a compromise and that the coastal commission was asking for that plan now. And there is that new state law that requires a sort of a, a sea level rise and shoreline management plan to be part of the LCP. And so I think that having that policy to develop that plan was a, a compromise in, okay, well, we're going to get this certified now, but you still have to follow this up. And so, you know, I don't know what they're going to require the city to do, but I, I think it's going to be something like that. But, but I think, I mean, I think the coastal resiliency, I mean, there is the tri management plan, but the coastal resiliency plan does have some, um, you know, it's, we didn't get as far in sort of the actions as we, we wanted to in that plan, but um, there are some recommendations for kind of some adaptive management and planning. And I, I think that's another grant that um, Angela and Becky are looking for is kind of that. You know, taking something like Edward Street and, and coming up with an adaptation plan um, for this, this area. Um, that stretch there. And then, yeah, I mean, the, the litigation, um, um, there's, you know, it continues to move forward, but it's been going on for a long time. And it looks like it's going to be extended again. Um, and the parties are still trying to, trying to come up with a settlement.
That's daunting, right?
It is.
Good luck. Great, good effort.
It's a, you know, it's really, it is, it's daunting for Trinidad. Again, such a small town. But quite a variety of coastal issues. Um, you know, Ha- Half Moon Bay does have, have quite a few similar issues, but with the, the other one that was recently certified was Manhattan Beach. And that's, I mean, that's just a mile long, two mile long stretch of beach. That's all that is with them. I mean, it's, I mean, there's, it's a, I know, but it's like a single issue. It's a single condition that sort of, it's all the same. Um, where Trinidad, nothing is the same. Um, so, yeah. At lea- I mean, you, you don't, you don't have the flooding, you know, streams and rivers and you don't have as much of the fire hazard. Um, but yeah, like the coastal um, geology, geologic stuff is, is pretty substantial.
What we just, uh, a couple of directions, I just wanted to understand. Goal SAF, what is SAF?
Oh, so safety. Yeah, yeah.
PS, what is the PS?
Probably public safety. Are those the, how the policy, so again, I didn't spend a lot of time like numbering and naming. Um, because I didn't want to spend time. So, so those are, that's probably the numbering from, um, Half Moon Bay. I would, yeah, I, I think. So I think we had ours safe, and that's why it was goal safe. And there is like a, an occasional policy safe something. Um, and yeah, I just didn't update all those.
The other thing that people want to know, trying to figure out, maybe what, what's like consider? If, you know, when there's something that says, consider this, I don't know if that's meaningful. And if we're not going to want to just consider something, that's a pretty weak statement, I think, in a general. It's either important and intelligent we should do, or maybe we can phrase it with, I found a few places throughout the document where it's still, they thought they really kind of. Yeah, built to us kind of.
Well, and we do have, and those might be appropriate for, I think the other initiatives is what we call them, where they're kind of like, oh, encourage and those sorts of kind of, yeah.
One of the uh, influences I, I gathered from the document was that in my natural hazards, it's sort of hierarchy where critical facilities and infrastructure should be sort of protected at all. And that, that made the question, what are critical facilities and infrastructure in Trinidad? Like there's no major hospitals or, and there's a water treatment plant that came to mind, but like, aside from that, I wasn't really sure.
Yeah, and it can depend on the community. Um, you know, I would say certainly the city's water plant. I would say the road system, the water lines. Um, so the, the distribution system, transportation system. Um, probably the, the harbor facilities are not in the city anymore. Really, I mean, um, sort of are, but I would say those are probably critical facility.
That's probably destructive also.
The electrical, yeah, yeah. So sort of the public services and utilities.
Are those defined someplace else in the?
Hmm, um, that would, that would be good to sort of define or at least list kind of what, what those are.
That includes um, infrastructure that's not necessarily related to the city, but is within the city limits. And I was thinking of actually PGD substation, uh, cable and internet, um, cables for uh, education. It's not under the city's permi to say that it's within the city limits.
Yeah, and I think it's important. I don't know what the purpose of the PGD substation is over there.
Yeah.
I thought it was PG. I mean, you know, I think these, these are some things where I think especially the, again, this is sort of the preparedness and response. Portion where, I mean, I think we almost need to start from scratch on some of this with some brainstorming. Um. Cause I don't think there's been any effort, you know, besides again, the, the local hazard mitigation plan, but I'm not sure the public was really involved in that. Um, you know, the EOP hasn't been updated. I, you know, I, I, I don't know what search doing, but yeah, there's no real. Um. There hasn't been, you know, a public, we've talked a little bit about, you know, the lack of um. Emergency access should 101 be compromised. Um, but, you know, we haven't really done that kind of. Outreach that I know of recently. The city hasn't.
To that point, I would say those are incredibly important things, are those the current.
Yeah, not, not necessarily, not necessarily. Um, which is again, sort of why I set that aside till. The city updates some of these other things. Um, but I am, I'm interested to know more about these things. That you might know that I don't, cause I'm not normally involved in some of these things. Um, and you guys might, might know more than I do.
The other thing is now that the harbor is in federal trust. Uh, it shows now that we do a whole lot of coordination with the rancher. Somebody. Because we talk about sea level rise all through this and hazard communication and all of this stuff, and they're the most right there, having to deal with it. And um, it's almost, you know, if, if, if we're not responsible for it. Then we almost carve out that whole section when you think about it, but I don't know that that's the right thing. And especially when you talk, start talking about policies about with setbacks.
It's, so yeah, no, I think it's a. I mean, you could, you could probably take a couple of different approaches. Um, in, in one sense. I mean, you could carve it out because it's no longer in the city's jurisdiction. You have no say over it, but. There are things that impact the city. Um, and there is still a piece of city property down there. Um, and, and the mooring field itself and the pier are on city property. Um, and so, um, you know, certainly public access is important. Um, so. So yeah, I think it would be good to reach out to the rancheria and, and, you know, consult with them on some of these issues. But again, the, the city doesn't necessarily have an authority, but it might be at least setting up lines of communication and responsibility and. And those sorts of things.
Um, I guess, thinking about like definitions in this document, there's. Often reference to coastal resources, which is like pretty vague. And there's a lot of talk about protection or, you know, mitigating impacts to coastal resources. I don't even know if we've actually defined that somewhere else in the general plan. If we have, but I guess that term is like. Either we need to define it explicitly, or like kick it out and just be more explicit.
Okay.
It is on each other's lists, the due list, which has certain, yeah, these definitions of these things.
Oh, good. But yeah, I agree. And I might. I might have a couple sample.
This is basically a to-do list for you, or like a?
Yes.
outline for the.
Yes.
For the safety element.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, it's more specific to the coastal resilience plan. So it's recommendations from the coastal resilience plan, so it doesn't necessarily cover everything in the safety element, but yes.
Yeah, that was another question. How, how do you envision the updates that we have here being incorporated into the?
A lot of them have been. Um, so I don't have the definitions in here because we, we have a separate glossary. Um, you know, we've. Um, that we've been maintaining. I do have some definitions for these things. Um, maybe for now, we should include them in the safety. I don't know if you want the whole glossary again, or if you just want these, you know, some of these. These terms um that we keep separate. Um, other, you know, and mapping and figures is one thing I, I need to work on. Um, some of that is, um, you know, I'm, I want some input from you guys. I'm gonna need to get some input from the coastal commission too. Um, on what they're gonna wanna see. Um, most of everything in between that. And then the specific, so there's some specific policy recommendations. Um, start on packet page seventy-one. Um, those I haven't incorporated in the safety element. But, but pretty much everything else between mapping and that is, is in these policies now.
That might have been one reason why I got a little concerned about the.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure, cause I do, I have another document that was sort of, oh, here's some policies, some actual policies to incorporate, and I. Yeah, I wasn't sure to, oh, what to include, but um. I thought this provided a little bit more of a like, so you know, I am looking at those definitions and mapping and things. Um, but yeah, I could see where that would seem redundant.
My notes, um, you know, with all the talk of bluff erosion, bluff stability and impacts and things. There's plenty of conversation and perhaps, you know, too much detail about the ocean-based river and impact. Um, there was very little on the impact of OWTS, particularly those that operate beyond their design capacity, because that saturates the soil. I have to believe has an impact, going into my way back recesses of, you know, my geology coursework. Um, many, many years ago, water and soil has an impact on stability, so just putting something about that.
And, and they're definitely, that is one of the recommendations from the um CCRT. But it's something that we lack a good understanding of or any evidence of. Um, so it's definitely been brought up as a concern. Um, whether it really. You know, I think, uh, and, and one of the things that I've talked about with GHD is, is. Something I'm really interested in is, is using that groundwater model to kind of look at that a little bit and look at. Um, pre-development conditions versus now, because I, um. There is, you know, in the summer, certainly we're putting more water into the ground than would be natural. In the winter, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Because we're, um, you know, a lot of that's running off a stormwater. Um, and instead of being infiltrated um near the bluff. So, um, I'd be interested in sort of seeing where that, where that balance is. Um. So yeah, that is definitely a recommendation we wanna, we wanna look at a little bit more. From the storm drain, you mean? Well, it is, I mean, it's contained. Um. So there, I mean, there, the stormwater from Van Wick Street. Um, is contained within the city's stormwater system for the most part. Um, the, the real concern, and it's, and it's directed down, um. It's basically directed down into the um parking lot now and infiltration basin, so away from the bluff. But I, the, the big concern has always been, there's a gravity storm drain that crosses that slide. Um, and. You know. That, it's a risk, it's a risky situation with that, with that gravity storm drain on, on such an unstable area. I mean, one, one of the things I, I asked about a little bit in the development of the, the coastal resiliency plan and. And geologists were in, but I would like, could you put in wells and pump water out of the bluff? It, it might be possible, but it's, it's sounds pretty, um. Like, it's probably not really feasible, but, um, yeah. But, but then you have to deal with the water.
I don't have a whole lot of input on that, because it's kind of hard to know figures that I'd like to see included until I know what the document is really gonna cover. Uh, but. The figure seventeen and nine A seems to be pretty. Communicating the same information.
Yes, they are, uh, yes. Nine A is just an older version, and I included that. Um, I did sort of like the end, the inset on this one. That showed the whole, um, the whole planning area. And then, um, I just thought it was also easier to see the instability. Um.
Change.
Yeah, it's. Yeah. I think that one's difficult to look at. Well, and I think, I think the current figure eight is kind of difficult to look at too. Um, so I think both of those need some work. You know, it's just, I, um. I don't know, and I guess this is something I need to talk to the coastal commission about and, and maybe some of the. Um, one or more of our geo- geologists, but I, you know, I think. The stability map. This, this stability map that's current plate three of the general plan, um. Is based on soil units and slope. And I'm just, I think we probably have better data now, and so. I don't know how much effort it would take to really get that updated, um, cause I know the coastal commission is not gonna let us just. Stop using that or change what we use um without a, a good reason. Um, but I just, it seems like we could probably. Do something a little better than that. Or, I mean, maybe, you know, it could even be, you know, another option is. Potentially just slope and distance from the bluff. And maybe, you know, we don't use this stability. Um, I'm not sure. I thought that was really interesting. Yeah, yeah. You know, I think some of these things are, I mean, if you have, like I said, sort of organization. I think I definitely need to work on. Pairing down the information and, and level of detail. So that's something I can definitely work on. Um, you know, orga- organization, like I said, it's, it's tough. I, I played around with some different things. Um, you know, that. If you wanna talk about organization tonight, or if you wanna send me some, some suggestions for an outline, um, I'm, I'm happy to. Happy to work on that. I'd love to have some input on that, but like I said, we can, sometimes it's easier just to make your own outline and. Mess around with it, and then if you wanna send that to me, um, whatever works for you guys. I think this is something we'll be talking about for a while. Um, this was just kind of a. I wanted to get, I, it was a lot more than I thought it was gonna be. I thought, oh, get them the safety element in November. And then I was like, whoa, um, okay, I'll get them a safety element and some version of it, so.
I've got to, I'm happy to take a stab at one organization issue, which is, um. Sort of the dichotomy between hazards and climate change versus hazards. And it struck me as a little bit peculiar, honestly, that like, one of the major determinants of. All of the shoreline hazards is sea level rise, and that they were, and in like the sea level rise and vertical land motion, there was almost no reference to. Coastal erosion and other shoreline hazards. So I don't, I think that they could be better merged, and I mean, that's. There's a lot of ways you can sort of uh merge or, or tangle some of these things apart, but that was one thing that just immediately caught me.
Yeah, I had the same. Uh, uh, we were around EDC, thinking those, those could be nerves, one. Greater hazards.
So would you just have climate change as a section under hazards? Or would you kind of incorporate the climate change information into each of the applicable hazards?
I originally had further the thought that maybe climate change should be its own like subsection of hazards, but. Maybe it makes more sense to just disperse them into all the other ones and how, and sort of discuss how. Climate change may affect those individual resources or hazards.
Yeah, and I mean, there's not necessarily a one-to-one correspondence, but. Um, and some, and there's definitely a lot of overlap as well. And like I don't, drought actually isn't on here as a hazard, but maybe it should be. Petting with fire, yeah, for sure.
Kind of covered a beautiful thing as we talk about the farming on the beach and that sort of thing. And, um, like, one of the things that. Kind of, or that I thought about was that, in some cases, we talk about, um. Not having a lot of development right in the beach. And then I started thinking. And then I started thinking about it and I, and, and there it is. And on, on the southern end of the city, one seven zero, one six five or whatever, all of those down there are right on the beach. And so if we talk about, um, it's, it's somewhere near, we say that there really isn't any development right in the beach. There's, there, I mean, there, uh, thirty feet away from the water line. And I, I mean, I'm guessing that we've been down there a couple of times, but there are multiple places where, um, there are, there is development right, right on the shoreline. So.
Uh, yeah, no, I think that there's, and, and maybe that was really just specific to beach issues and, and access. Um, but, um, yeah, I mean, one fifty and one sixty, they already have armoring. Um, twenty scenic had armoring, but I think it mostly got washed away, um, two, two winters ago. Um,
I definitely don't usually have to deal with that.
Yeah.
Does she do that for us in savings? Yeah.
Yeah.
Even though that's a guess to a certain extent. Uh, I have two kinds of issues.
And do you have one other industry property, including that Harvard, well, technically under perjury anymore? You know, we just recently approved the visitor center that's pretty much on the beach. Right?
Yep.
Um, the lighthouse is on the beach, the restaurant is, you know, so there are, we have things even listed on that.
And there's a residence there too.
Yeah.
So.
Yes. It's, I mean, I think, you know, Trinidad is, that's another thing where you're, you're a, you know, really it's the bluff hazards. There's not a huge, surprisingly, not a huge sea level rise risk there. I mean, you can have with sea level rise and big storms, you can start encroaching up there. Um, but it's, you know, like, like the lighthouse probably isn't gonna, that's not going anywhere. So, but and probably the, you know, I think the, the interpretive center had some um, kind of not armoring, but it was strengthened on, on that side for tsunamis and, and things like that. But it i- it is actually a little bit higher than it seems. Um, and it's really more the public access. I think that's, that's the main issue with sea level rise. Yeah.
Well, it's kind of the main issue with tsunamis.
And yeah, you know.
One looking at, uh, part of the section on fire risks, uh, there was a comment made that West Haven has the, you know, heavily forced to brush that kind of stuff in the city. It's not, that's not entirely accurate. So making sure that is cleaned up, um, because there are portions of the city that are definitely heavily forced to show the fires. Yeah, like, I guess also, you know, about this fire hazard, um, I mean, there was a lot of talk about, you know, wildfire. There's raging, right? Which obviously won't happen on this day, but, um, like some things you don't have to consider, but, um, there's also all that discussion about, you know, defensive space around homes and stuff and, uh, I mean, certainly very important, but I, one thought I had is like, well, you know, there's different parts of the city have very different fire risks. And maybe there's a way we can like tease that out. Bird residential, maybe doesn't need the same defensive spaces.
Yeah, agreed.
Something I'm talking about, Graham, that's a contributor to fire lives for you to be during, you know, certain different spots of that. Cities can have different voluntary certification process and have some meetings and people do volunteer, I don't know, maybe a certain fee, I think it's how it was done in the deck and bill, but it might be a kind of given that and then be educating folks on defensive space. And that would be, you know, no finishing companies put much stock in that anymore. The other plan, that was something that, whether it's fire or ice community, that didn't help. I think it's still good. So that might be something that could help folks, you know, um, as a lot of folks are probably insurance. I worry about having insurance in the city, so that we're surrounded by four. So, you know, if we're not going to ensure do I have, because, you know, so that it would affect town. It'd be a little bit of a, of a little section. We're looking to get to, you're not more than.
Oh, yeah. Like, I mean, like I said, I think this is, it will be a work in progress. The more, the more comments I can get. Like I said, if you can send me your comments, I think that'd be really helpful. Um, you know, to, to get you a, you know, the, the more polished I can get this before your next review, you know, the, I think the more efficient that'd be.
This ball, can you talk about next month or five months?
Oh, no. I mean, I don't know if I'll have time to work on it a whole lot before a December meeting. Um, but I would say I'd like to get it back to you by January. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think so. Uh, and I guess if all the commissioners are working on the same documents, yeah. And I guess, yeah, yeah, that's probably, yeah.
Things that should be able to track.
Yeah, I know.
Track changes too, we edit this.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a great idea.
I can, you know, share documents with you that, that way I could set up a folder, but, um, but yeah, editing.
If I heard you, we can go back to, we are, we really large enough to use them back together. It'd be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
Not to totally unravel too much of what we just accomplished, but, um, is it, is it a safety element specifically which needs to be in, um, the general plan? Because it seems like maybe safety and acknowledgement of natural hazards are sort of different things. I mean, looking at the, looking at the direction introduction, for example, says the purpose of this chapter is to ensure the safety of community members and property as well as protection of the coastal environment and coastal resources. And those seem like different things to me that might make more sense since separate elements.
So the required, you have to set a basic one, but there's no rules that we couldn't add more, right?
Yeah. And so, um, I mean, I think, I mean, I think things like fire and, you know, landslides and seismic safety, those are things that have to be in a safety element along with the police and, and services. So I think it's traditionally kept that way. But again, Half Moon Bay is one I looked at and they have, they have their safety element that's part of their non-coastal general plan. That's really more of this disaster preparedness, um, issues. And then they have the coastal, and I think they called it environmental hazards. They didn't call it a safety element. Um, so maybe it's hazards and safety. Um,
Yeah, I'm not lying for one way or the other. I'm just curious. Well, one of the reasons why this feels so dense is because they kind of don't do much to a single elements.
Yeah.
I don't have strong feelings on that. Maybe, maybe it's like more digestible, but we press it out a little more. Again, most of them can be shared.
But that might be a better way. It might be another way to organize it that might make more sense. Um, you know, and I, and maybe somehow having big chunks. I know we talked about maybe putting everything under hazards, including the climate change, but maybe it should be, maybe there should be bigger chunks. Um, it might be easier for people to digest. Again, I'll look at some other examples that aren't in the coastal zone. Um, and I can, if you, if you want to look at the, um, you know, there's the, the general plan guidelines. Um, if you want to look at that for the safety element, um, it might be helpful too, to sort of understand. But, but we can, but the city, the city could break up its safety element into multiple elements, um, as long as all the required, you know, things are, are in those elements, um, or combine. Um, yeah. So we do have flexibility.
I would just, I would say that I actually like some of the more technical aspects of the, like, plan that almost seem more like a report. I think it's nice that all that, I think, in one location, you know, in, in one document. I don't necessarily know that the density is a problem, but I think the organization certainly is.
Yeah. I, I think it's a little dense. Um, I think, a- and it, it is something we've struggled with, with a, a lot of the elements and conservation, open space was another one where we struggled with how much detail, like you want enough detail so that the public understands where your policies are coming from, but not so much that it's overwhelming and it can be hard. And that, that, that's a little different for everybody. Um, but yeah, finding that balance, um, you know, I think we, we certainly can refer people to other reports, but we don't necessarily want people to have to go chasing all that stuff down to find the information they want. So yeah, it's, it's always kind of a, a difficult balance to strike. Um.
Yeah, there's other comments. My last comment really is that, I mean, I'm glad that, uh, that Aaron's willing to sit down and, you know, play a role in drafting some specific sections, but I mean, there's a lot of expertise in town. And it would be nice, I mean, there's a dog safety committee or whatever, right? So why not have a natural hazards and safety committee that, uh, that issues for, sort of crowdsourced expertise and input for, for something as critically important as this. Maybe a couple of commissioners, a couple of city council persons, members of the public. History of committees in town, that would seem like a pretty important one to me.
Works out, works out.
Yeah, I, again, I think, I think, and maybe I'll talk to, I mean, and it's, it's hard right now. Obviously, end of the year stuff is always difficult for, for staff. And then with a new city manager coming on, that, that makes things a little bit awkward too. Um, but yeah, maybe I'll, I'll bring some of this up with Cheryl in terms of um, coordinating some of these updates. Um, you know, if the city's going to be working on the local hazard mitigation plan, does it also want to look at the EOP? And then we bring in the safety, you know, and, um, so yeah, that might be something the, the city council wants to kind of focus on next year.
Yeah, just getting to Nancy, the, the foggy section, I did bring a whole lot of value from that person, aware that it's foggy here in kind of time and you know, the temperature is already not to minimize it at all, this part of the direct impact on the safety element hazards. I'm not sure that the temperature change here over the next 50 years is really going to be being told by the, being a source of sea level rise. Who might have the, pull that? All right, for your best.
But the ground packs on vegetation, moisture content and whatnot, right? They play a role. Wildfire hazards. So I don't think it's totally irrelevant, but there's an event to be aligned in the wildfire sector. Yeah, those sort of impacts, actually.
Yeah.
And which one?
Yeah. Um, I guess one, I mean, so, uh, and I mean, another overall way to organize this would be to have all the text and then all the policies. I think in most of our elements, we've tried to sort of do the related policies close to the related text. But maybe in this, uh, that's another way to, a lot, a lot of, um, general plans are set up that way where they have all their texts and then all their policies.
Yeah, I mean, I don't always agree with that, but here, I mean, that makes sense.
It might make sense.
Kind of all this information is summarized in introduction and then this is what you actually have to rely on.
Yeah.
When, when the planning committee looked at the safety element in 2012, what was the intent or what? That, what, why? Or what came of that?
I remember. Uh, I, I, again, I was pretty surprised at how sparse and, I mean, the policies were like, oh, continue to enforce building codes. I mean, kind of worth, I mean, it was not, it was not very good. The 2012 version. I think it's just one that we've just never spent a lot of time on over the years.
Was there not one previous to 2012 that? I looked for the original, I got that. I didn't see anything. There wasn't a specific safety element. A lot of the things that are discussed.
There, there, there is, but it's, it's from nineteen sev- it's from nineteen seventy-four, nineteen seventy-five.
I couldn't, I couldn't see it.
It's, yeah. Yeah, if you click on the general plan documents, yeah. So there was an original, I did not use any, I didn't use any of that. Um, you know, prior to that. Okay, so, I mean, the history of the city's general plan update goes back to like two thousand ninety, I, I mean, two thousand. So I think I think there was a safety element when I started, and that's probably what I took to do the, the 2012. Like I said, I think it's just an element we haven't ever spent a lot of time on since that first original, you know, kind of trying to put that together. Um, and so it just hasn't, it hasn't been developed as thoroughly as some of the other drafts.
Question, like the better beer or of the December eighteen meeting? Are people going to be around for that? That's, it was a right before Christmas, uh, just living up, you know, what will the volume of the workload be? Have this forever? Is that something? I work that, I'm sure they'll attend.
I could, um, yeah, I mean, for me, because city staff are so busy doing so many other things, it tends to be kind of quiet. And I, I don't have any upcoming deadlines. My, um, you know, other than getting this LCP amendment done, um, I might have another project I might work on between now and the end of the year. That's actually not Trinidad related. I haven't worked on something, you know, I'm trying to about it. But, uh, um, but yeah, I mean, I could, like I said, I don't know if I could get this ready. Um, but if we have things to talk about, I could put together a meeting. And it might depend on, I'm expecting comments back from HCD and the ADU ordinance at any time. Um, and I also want to, um, talk about the OWTS ordinance at some point. Um, you know, I think that, you know, we talked a little bit about septic requirements for ADUs, and I think we're going to need to put that in the OWTS ordinance as opposed to the ADU ordinance. Um, and so then we might as well look at the OWTS ordinance. There's probably some updates to that we could make. You know, I don't know if I'm ready to jump into that. Is there, I mean, there's. You know, I don't know if I'm ready to jump into that. Is there, I mean, there's maybe some of these things on our future agenda items, um.
I guess it's part of the, very good, it's in part. First one, yeah. From telling that, there would be value potential still at a similar meeting, so I'm hearing.
Maybe if I, if I can get some things to together, um, I mean, what would be the, the, of those things that I talked about, what would the. Planning commission's preference be for focusing on?
I wouldn't have any objection to just walking through, start walking through the, the safety element. Um, you know, we give you kind of a top level.
Okay.
That's.
Keep working on that. Okay.
Go down a little further if you want to do that.
Sure. I mean, if nothing else, we could, I mean, even if I don't have a lot of time to work on the techs, we can at least work on maybe some figures and some organizations and definitions, things like that.
I would also say of the, of the future, that is to say, here, the revisiting the new design.
Mm hmm.
Guidelines.
Yeah.
That's something we've done relatively recently, that's. You know, Chris and I expressed interest in doing again, that would be a bit more of a design review process. I think that would be ultimately quick and easy work, while.
Well, that, it. Kind of reminded me when I was reading this element that, um, we had talked about rainwater catchment. And wastewater use. And it always seemed to me that that was something that was pretty straightforward, that we could just get done pretty fast. And get it to handle that along.
I think it's not something that we even have to do anything with, um, we, we have some policies in the conservation element. And maybe the circulation element as well, um, because that deals with public services, um. I mean, I think it was really essentially, we were just gonna have some pre-engineered. Designs, um, that, that people could use, um, with some guidelines for, because if it's a, I mean, if the tank is under a certain size, it doesn't require. Your approval, um.
Well, this is very, we had to, uh, whether or not we gotta review those standard designs.
I don't think so, yeah.
Great.
But I can at least get you an update on.
Yeah.
Whether, because I, I thought G H D was putting to- together something, and I, I don't think I've ever seen him.
You heard the question of this one. That report?
Yeah, no, I think, I, I think I've mentioned the things that I'm kind of working on, um. I did get, get those, uh, L C P amendments. There was the housing related one, and then there was the Norrell. Um, rezone, so those have been submitted to the coastal commission. They have been deemed complete. Um, although the coastal commission's kind of swamped, so I don't know how quickly they'll get to them, but. Um. And, so, yeah, I'm primarily, um, you know, the, the L C P update, the grant goes through the end of twenty twenty five, and that's gonna come up quick, and. I had to remind the coastal commission that I gave them. Our previous draft general plan stuff like. Two years ago, and I haven't, so if, if we're gonna get any, I, I need to get comments from them, but I don't, I, I don't know. I, you know, I, I did a build out assessment, but I, you know, I. Yeah, no, there's, they're, they have the visitor services study, um, so, yeah.
Would it be helpful to have a lettering, say, y'all to the coast commission asking whether private or is that. Not beneficial to your work?
I think they just, it's their staff. Their workload, and they just don't have the staff. I think they're trying to hire a couple people. They have a lot of turnover there.
In that case, I guess we are there.